Here.
Trusty Katsinas.
Here.
Trusty Malani.
Here.
Mayor Pico.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and with all the liberties and justice of our.
Approval of September 8, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman.
Trusty Fenton.
Move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees Meeting of September 8, 2020.
Second.
Any questions, comments, call the roll.
Trusty Fenton.
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas.
Aye.
Trusty Dodge.
Aye.
Trusty Calendrell.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Orland Park Lions Club raffle license.
Mr. Mayor.
Trusty Katsinas.
I move to approve issuing a raffle license for one year beginning September 22, 2020, expiring September 22, 2021, to the Orland Park Lions Club to conduct a weekly raffle drawing at Patty D's at 7:00 PM every Friday.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trusty Katsinas.
Aye.
Trusty Dodge.
Aye.
Trusty Fenton.
Aye.
Trusty Calendrell.
Aye.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Proclamation in honor of Plows Council on Aging 45th Anniversary.
Tonight, I'd like to give a proclamation in honor of Plows Council on Aging 45th Anniversary. They are a phenomenal group that do wonderful things for our senior community. Whereas Plows Council on Aging was founded in 1975 to serve as an aging resource assisting residents in Payless, Lamont, Orland, and Worth Townships. And whereas Plows provides community support with programs and services such as adult protective services, advocacy and benefits, caregiver support, care planning, choices for care program, home-delivered meals, information and assistance, in-home services, shared housing, and whereas Plows programs and services help people over 60 and their caregivers and families who are navigating the aging life cycle as well as adults with disabilities living at home. The nonprofit brings innovative and integrated solutions to older adults, maintain health, dignity, and self-worth in the community, ensuring independence in their homes for as long as possible. And whereas Plows has helped many people in our community over the years, and we wish them to continue success and appreciation for all of the critical programs that assist our residents. Now therefore, myself and the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Orland Park, on behalf of all the residents of the Village of Orland Park, congratulate Plows on 45 years of helping more than 16,000 individuals in 20 communities with their many programs dated this 21st day of September, 2020.
For those of you who don't know, Plows does a lot of great things for our seniors here in the area, and the village supports them a lot. And we urge everyone else to do the same.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
You should do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Proclamation honoring national public lands.
So we'd also like to today give a proclamation honoring public lands here, National Public Lands Day here in the Village of Orland Park. Whereas America's system of public lands includes parks, unique landscapes, forests, wildlife refuges, historic trails, natural streams and wetlands, nature centers, gardens, and other landmark areas throughout the nation that individually and collectively represent irreplaceable national resources. And whereas public lands provide locally accessible natural and cultural resources for environmental learning, wildlife appreciation, and recreation. And whereas public lands promote civic ideals that include shared stewardship and recognition of public ownership. And whereas shared stewardship requires the goodwill, cooperation, and active support of citizens, community, city, and state officials, business leaders, children, and adults. And whereas recreation opportunities offered by public lands help families lead a more active lifestyle and reduce the incidence of childhood obesity. And whereas land conservation efforts improve access to public lands by urban residents to and work to break down the barriers that prevent Americans from actively utilizing their public lands. And whereas an alliance between private citizens, land managers, and community leaders improves the condition of publicly held lands for the greater enjoyment and enrichment of all Americans. And whereas National Public Lands Day, co-sponsored by the National Environmental Education Foundation, the Bureau of Land Management, the Bureau of Reclamation, the Department of Defense, the Environmental Protection Agency, the National Park Service, U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the USDA Forest Service, has become an annually anticipated event. Now let it therefore be resolved that September 26, 2020, be proclaimed National Public Lands Day in Orland Park, Illinois. Congratulations. Tonight, we have members of our Open Lands Commission here. For those of you who don't know that we have an Open Lands Commission, and they've acquired over 250 acres of open lands over the last 20 years, and they've done great work, the most recent of which is the Janikus property out on LaGrange Road between LaGrange and Southwest Highway. And I encourage you to come see that park because it really is beautiful. And additionally, aside from all of our open lands, we have about 15,000 acres of forest preserve either in or touching Orland Park as well. So we're blessed to have all of these plus the other parks that the village maintains for open space for everyone to enjoy. So if you'd like to come down for some photos, I'd appreciate it.
Trusty Fenton's joining me. She's part of the Open Lands Commission and has been very active with that since she's been on board.
Pledge table from September 9, 2020 to September 21, 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Trusty Healy.
I move to approve the accounts payable from September 9, 2020 through September 21, 2020, in amount of $2,706,097.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Trusty Fenton.
Aye.
Trusty Dodge.
Aye.
Trusty Calendrell. Trusty Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item A, payroll for September 4, 2020 approval. Item B, replacement 2003 workforce step van number 6002 suburban purchasing cooperative award. Item C, disposal of village equipment ordinance. Item D, village cobblestone ordinance for a special use permit for residential plan development with modifications and rezoning. Item E, Megan Nicole Ridge, 13201 88th Avenue, authorizing annexation agreement ordinance. Item F, Lexington Insurance Company release and settlement agreement. I'll entertain a motion to approve items A through F of the consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
Call the roll.
Trusty Healy.
Aye.
Trusty Katsinas.
Aye.
Trusty Fenton.
Aye.
Trusty Dodge.
Aye.
Trusty Calendrell. Trusty Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Pico.
Aye.
Stormwater basin improvement program amendment.
I will entertain a motion to move to approve amending the 2011 plan to incorporate the stormwater transfer program.
So moved.
Second. Clerk Mahalak, do we have anyone to speak tonight?
No.
No? Okay.
Not yet.
Okay. I'll turn it over to staff to give us a report on this.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So we have just an overview of our stormwater facilities program that we began in 2011. And so what we have, as we're discussing this, is Krishid can answer any questions regarding MWRD, the best of his abilities. And then we have Joel, our Public Works Director, that can talk specifically about Eagle Ridge project, which is the reason we're here today. So, you know, what is stormwater detention? And I think we all know the purpose here. It's to prevent flooding, and it's regulated by a number of governmental agencies. I mentioned MWRD already. As we know, as we go through this, that stormwater detention is expensive to build and maintain. And today, stormwater design has evolved into the best practice that we have right now, which is restoring native plant and aquatic communities to the drainage landscape. And in fact, MWRD requires that. That's a requirement. So if anybody was building, that's something that they would have to do. So what stormwater is not is it's not a park. It serves as a purpose, but with enough effort, you know, there are improvements that could be made to make it look visually appealing. So this chart on the right comes from the Morton Arboretum. They have a guide. So there's three options. Turf grass, then you have the stone option, and you have a native planting option. At the very bottom is what the 10-year cost is for those three. That's, you know, again, from the Morton Arboretum. In the case of Eagle Ridge, the village has budgeted $91,000 to do the pond shoreline restoration project. So what that includes is obviously the site prep that we've already started. It includes the planting, three years of maintenance, and in case of this project, it also includes outcrop stone installation for fishing and the like. What we did this past week was we also asked our consultant, our contractor in this project, if we were to do a stone component, a riprap, what the cost would be. And that cost is $298,000. So the village is going to be contributing $91,000 for pond restoration. But if we were to do the riprap option, it's $298. Next slide. I think everybody knows the goals and benefits of stormwater detention, but in this case, we're talking about this because of the problems with pond erosion. So properly designed and maintained stormwater detention will help with pond erosion. So in our comprehensive plan and development quotes, these goals are embraced. So the reason we're talking about the Eagle Ridge project is because of the shallow-rooted long grass that was planted right up to the pond's edge. So shallow-rooted plants, they're just no match against erosion. So one of the goals of the Eagle Ridge Pond Restoration Project was the pond stabilization. And the planting, the buffer that we had planned was the most economical environmental solution for that area. So there's a lot of benefits of native plants. And I just want to, I also want to mention one other thing. As we were preparing this, I did also engage Lou Muley, who was just up here for the Open Lands Award. He's an expert in this field. So if there are any specific questions about native plants, Lou said he'd be happy to answer any of those. But the biggest benefit from the native planting is it protects the shorelines from erosion. It provides and improves habitat for fish and other wildlife, and improves the water quality, attracts natural wildlife. It has been shown to be more resilient than hard-edged shorelines over time. And we saw that with the previous slide, the Morton Arboretum slide, that over the 10-year course, it's more resilient. They don't require fertilizers, there's less watering, and it helps reduce air pollution. A lot of great benefits to the native planting. This just continues that, and it was mentioned earlier. It deters Canadian goose, which, as we know, goose droppings impact the quality of the water for the pond. Native plantings, we've mentioned this already, they help with the shoreline erosion. And what it also does is the detention facility that we're talking about now is a network of detention facilities. And we've talked about this a number of times in different projects. So this is just one part of a larger detention facility that at the end of the day would improve Marley Creek watershed as well. Our native planting plan is, and we've seen this, is significantly reduces the long-term maintenance cost for the pond restoration. All right, next slide. So this one, Mr. Muley provided this, and he can probably talk about this more, about the biodiversity and the benefits of, I don't know, Lou, if you want to just chime in.
Not at this time, no. So it, okay. So we will give everyone an opportunity to speak, but you will not interrupt the speakers when they're speaking. And I said, no, they need to be acknowledged. You notice that the board members are not interrupting, so no one here should be interrupting while they're speaking. So George asked Lou as part of his presentation.
So take a look at the stormwater diagram up at the top. Naturalized detention means natural plants have been planted and replacing sod grass, all right, both underneath the water, at water's edge, and somewhat upland, all right? So that this drawing gives you an idea of the plantings that would replace the turf grass, which currently today goes all the way to the water's edge and has some overhang from erosion. It, the, you can see it's prairie plantings, wetland plantings, and there's a little bit of dry prairie. And as an example of what it looks like, depending on the species you pick, but for this particular project, my understanding is we'll be using shorter forbs and grasses, which are high in wildflower mixes, so that you get a lot of pollinator and visual beauty, you know, out of it. It does take a few years and some initial maintenance, but over the long run, you won't be mowing, laying out fertilizer as much, and the pollutants won't be going as much into the pond as well as keeping the water at, there's some holding capacity that will be developed as this that you don't have today.
So this is just a little bit of history. When we started this whole project, we looked at the Eagle Ridge, the permit. So the permit for the stormwater facility was approved by MWRD, and originally, it did include a requirement for native plantings. So the permit back in '93 did require native plantings. So at some point, those were replaced with turf grass. This is important because as the village was the permitee for this project, the village is responsible for the maintenance of this stormwater facility. If today, MWRD said, "Village, you're in violation of your permit," we would be required to bring it back to what the permitted approval was back in '93. So, I mean, that's important because as we're talking about, if there is the possibility for a transfer of ownership, the village continues to remain as the owner, as the responsible party for the permit. So there would have to be some type of mechanism for ensuring that the permit is being met. So as a potential option, in 2011, the board approved the stormwater, the pond stabilization program. And that program included native plantings for the buffer zones. As an option here, if the village could implement this stormwater facility transfer program, and what that would mean is we would allocate the funds that were originally earmarked for the native plantings, in this case, $91,000. And once the HOA takes over the pond and administers the pond stabilization improvements, we would transfer that $91,000 to the HOA. Basically, anything above and beyond the native plantings, which, since we have such a large area that we have to maintain, we have to do everything in the most economical and the short-term and long-term, but also most environmental. So anything beyond that would be the HOA's responsibility. But again, this is subject to MWRD requirements, so they would still have to meet MWRD requirements for that. As I mentioned before, as the permitee, we still have a responsibility to this. So an SSA, a component of this program would be an establishment of an SSA. Basically, it would mean that if the HOA was not maintaining the pond according to requirements, there would be a funding mechanism for that. So this is just an option for the board to consider. If it's considered, then what we would do then is we would start having discussions with the HOA to see if they are interested in taking over responsibility for the pond under these terms. Again, we would turn over the $91,000 that we were going to do, and if anything above and beyond that, if they want to improve it that way, then it would be the HOA's responsibility beyond that. That is the presentation.
So we'd asked previously if there were anybody here to sign up to speak. There wasn't. Is there anybody here that wants to speak on this issue? Okay. I want to remind anyone who comes up to speak on the issue. I understand. I'm speaking right now. So I want to remind everyone that comes up to speak on this issue that you will be limited to three minutes. Also, I want to remind you that these limits have been set by the board and for a good reason. Imagine if we have 25 people speaking, and we have at times had double that. These individuals could filibuster our meetings for days without these rules, and we would have no recourse. In fact, legally, we would be unable to stop them from speaking, and that's not effective government. So as the chair, it's my job to enforce this rule, and that rule wasn't unanimously enforced, approved by the board, and I do so at all of our meetings with all of our non-scheduled speakers. So all of our speakers will have three minutes, and all we need is your name and your address if you're willing to give it.
My name is Wally Waysock. I live at 18140 Tennessee Lane in Orland Park, Eagle Ridge. I live right on the pond. I've been there for 20 years. All right? There's no, in my estimation, and I'm no expert, I'll tell you that right now, there is no, other than at the shoreline where the water meets the shore, that's the only part that has any erosion. Originally, in July 27 of this year, we were issued a letter. In that letter, it indicated that around the pond, at that interface between the water and the shore, there would be riprap install. And that was given as a typical section along the shoreline. If anybody wants to see it, I've got a copy of it with me. So now we're going around back and saying, "Oh, no, we're not going to do the riprap," even though that was already stated as a typical section. Now, I've toured the other ponds. There were four other ponds. Imperial Pond is one. There's an east and a west. And I've gone to Yearling Crossing Pond and the Great E grit Pond. Imperial Pond's east and west. The east one is the larger. You can't hardly get to it over the embankment because there's so much brush and so many weeds and things growing that you can't hardly get back there. But I made my way back there to look at if all this weeds and brush and everything improved the water quality. It has not. It's got just as much algae on it as our pond does. The Imperial West Pond is a very small pond. It was said to have high grass that was two to three feet tall. It was taller than me. You can't even see the water. And you'd have to walk through the weeds, but you still can't see it. The other two ponds are, the last one, I think, is the...
One minute.
Great E grit Pond was, I think, the last one that was done. There's not a flower on there unless people have been picking them, because there's no flowers. It's just all weeds. The fact of the matter is, we like the pond the way it is. We've got a lot of people. I've circulated a, or we have circulated a petition, and we have 179 signatures from residents around the pond that don't want the weeds. We don't want the rodents. We don't want all the other stuff that goes with it. I mean, if you've got rodents in those high weeds, there's going to be coyotes there because there's already coyotes that walk through the neighborhood. We've got a lot of old people that live around the pond, like to walk and walk their small pets. What's to say that a coyote's not going to jump out and take one of the pets or one of the older people? It's just not a good thing to do. It's in our front yard. Most of these other ponds are in somebody's backyard. And if I had a pond in my backyard, I'd welcome the tall weeds to keep the fishermen out from coming into my backyard. But this is in our front yard.
Time is up.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, do you care about the residents of Orland Park?
Your time is up, sir.
You care about the residents of Orland Park?
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up.
Evidently not. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is up. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? And again, you're limited to three minutes.
Terry McQuade, 18248 Tennessee Lane, 35-year resident of Orland Park, 27 there on the pond. Once again, I don't believe one size should fit all when it comes to this. These are, this pond is 30 feet from our front doors. You know, I understand 179th and 104th Avenue, nobody backs up, or the homes back up to it, and they have fences. Or the one at Walgreens, it doesn't matter. The one out here that the mayor last two weeks ago said was nice, doesn't make sense. And he's an expert in landscape. We're just asking for some help. I went to Fountain Hills today and talked to the residents. They're three years into this plan, and they also were told by the Public Works that this would not be more than two to three feet. We couldn't even measure out the one bush. We estimated it to be 18 feet. It's not being maintained. The water is worse than our water, and we're just asking for some help. Like I say, we've got just so many people. Visit our thing. You're seeing grandmothers out there having picnics with their grandkids, grandpas, these guys right here with their little grandchildren out there fishing. And you're going to take that away from us. It's in our front yards, people. You don't have this in your front yards. Why make us? That's all I'm asking, just for a consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Oh, you need to take the microphone.
Hi. Once again, Angelo Lambros, 18128 Tennessee. Good to see everyone again, I think. You know, again, when my wife and I searched and searched for a home, and we went to other suburbs, and then we located this location, what we found there was a hidden jewel, a jewel that is nowhere else available, one that you can look at and see the beauty of the pond in the morning, the ducks, the geese, as I mentioned before. You don't take a jewel in an area, in a residential area, and bury it with weeds. You don't do it in your house. You shouldn't do it at ours. That is an amazing area that's there. You polish that jewel, you put that jewel out there, and you sell it to the residents of Orland Park. You don't tell Orland Park residents who've been there for years, let alone the rest of them who just bought there, "This is the way it is. Go look at those weeds, enjoy them." You have no idea what you have there. You don't live there, obviously. You don't live there, obviously, so have you been over there to see it? Do you understand what we like and we see there? Why I spent $230,000 to move there? Yeah, I've got about $40,000 to put into a home. But, my wife and I bought it because we believed in Orland Park. What is it to believe in here if we're going to lose this money? Think about this, please. You're ruining what we invested in. Okay? This is not right. There are other ways. Worst comes to worst, leave it alone, please. That's all I'm asking. That's all any of us asking. Think about this. You're burying something that should be shown to the public. When people come through there and they see that, that is a selling point. What part don't we understand here? We all do. We live there. But, nobody here sees it. I don't get it. So, please, again, reevaluate this. Because I can't afford to lose money. And we're going to lose money because no one's going to buy in that pond when those weeds are there. And you're going to get mosquitoes. And people are going to take whatever they can get, and they're going to get the hell out, and we're going to suffer the loss. I didn't spend this money to lose. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else to speak?
My name's Yura Vigianis, and I have been in Orland Park for a year now. My parents have lived here for 35 years, and I'm here to take care of my aging father. I just wanted to say, I just wanted to ask if there are any other ways of caring for the stormwater, because there are so many impermeable surfaces in Orland, and that leads to all the water flowing into these retention ponds. What about, you know, mandating some of the new construction to do that kind of permeable surface, like they have at Morton Arboretum? Their whole driveway is permeable, and it's actually quite beautiful. So, there are other ways of, you know, protecting the area. And then planting more trees, right? Because trees, their roots drink up the water. So, and then I just want to point out that what people are calling weeds are, can actually be incredibly beautiful wildflowers, especially if they're maintained and planted in a certain way. We live in the Wedgewood area, and we have a really pretty pond that has beautiful wildflowers all around it. And there are areas where people come to fish, so there's no reason why you can't have both. And there could be designated areas where people can come and fish, and then there are designated areas that are beautifully maintained, that have the gorgeous blues and reds and yellow wildflowers. So, you know, weeds are what you don't want in your garden. And if you want them, they're not weeds. So, that's all we have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Timothy Childers, I know you're here to speak on ponds as well.
Mayor, trustees, thank you for having me. I live at 15723 Chesapeake Lane in the Westminster area, right behind Jewel. We do have a pond there. We do have weeds in the, whatever they plant. Sir, what's your name again?
George.
George, okay. I don't see it being a problem, the erosion. Yeah, there might be a little bit of algae. But, there's one thing that most people don't understand, is some people these days like to fish with their children. They like to do things with their children. And fishing with my daughter is probably one of the best things that I do in my life. So, when I go out there and I fish and I have weeds, oh, well. My daughter don't care. I don't care. Why would anybody else care? Go out there and have fun. Maybe if you go out there and look at it and try it, it would work. I live, my back door is right up against the pond. I look outside every morning, and I have the pond, a beautiful pond. It has weeds, okay, so what? That's what bug spray's for. Go buy some. It helps. That's what sunscreen and everything else is. Go outside, go fish. It's a great plan, but there are some things that could be left out. It doesn't stop the geese, that's for sure. It does not. The geese come in, and they go, and we have probably 1,000 of them all the time. It doesn't stop the geese. But, there can be maybe a better way of making it look slightly more beautiful, but, like I said, there shouldn't be so much animosity over something that you can do for fun, such as fishing, fishing with your grandchild, fishing with your child, or even just going out there to relax and sit and fish. How many people here believe that fishing is relaxing? I know I do. Something fun. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Okay, I'll turn it over to the board for comments.
Mayor? One more.
Okay.
I probably won't even take one minute. But, my name is Cindy Spica, and I live at 8816 Clearview Drive, behind the Riviera Country Club. And I live right on the lake. We have riprap, which our homeowners association had all of us pay a special assessment for. And I know our portion at the time was $1,000. We have the riprap, and it's beautiful decorative rock. But, let me say this. We do have fish, and we are allowed to fish on our lake. And a lot of times, I'll see children or grandchildren of homeowners in my area fishing, and the kids will take the rocks and throw them in the lake. And when I see that, I see my $1,000 getting thrown in the lake. So, I really don't know if the natural route is better than the riprap, but I thought I would just mention, what I see as a problem with the riprap, it just keeps getting thrown in the lake. And eventually, probably have to be replaced at another time with another assessment. But, if anyone has questions about riprap, I can probably, I'll be around if you want to ask me more about it. But, that's what we have there. And I know it was done for the potential for erosion at the time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, I'll turn it over to the board. So, if anyone has comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas.
I just wanted to pick up on something George said earlier, that there was plantings there, and then turf got there. How did it make that transition, and by whom?
You know, we don't know the full history. All we know is that the MWRD permit required native plantings. So, native plantings would have started there, but at some point, and nobody, we don't have the, you know, we don't have any idea what happened, but at some point, it became turf So, just to reemphasize, the village's permit for that requires native planting. So, MWRD can require the village, at this point, you know, they permitted it, assuming native planting. They could come back to us and say, "You need to do it right now."
And also, back to one of the gentleman's concern about the height of these native plants. You know, if you look at the depth of that Eagle Ridge Pond, it goes down significantly. So, if you're putting plants in there, are the plants going to be higher than the current shoreline? Would they exceed that? And is there any way to control it? Instead of, I think a gentleman mentioned, they were four or 18 feet taller than he was. You know, is there any way that the village maintaining that property could make sure those native plants don't reach a certain height to block a view or look like a weed?
Sure. So, I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask either Joel, and then maybe Lou can also chime in about selection of plantings and heights of plantings.
The native plants, I may be referred to by the people that are very tall, maybe phragmites, which is an indication of an invasive plant that is not really native to the area, that has come in as a weed, and has really grown very, very tall, and requires extensive management and cost to try to remove and keep, and replace with native plants. Native plants come in all sizes. There's grasses and wildflowers that are specialized for wetland pond border areas. And so, what a restoration ecologist would go out and measure what the slope is, take a look at the soils in the area, and they may, you know, have to regrade just a little bit of it, so that they can get the required plants, the particular, typical plants they put in on the, on the high-water side, low-water side, and dry side. So, in this particular case, since there were some concerns, you can make a selection of plants that favor, that maybe only grow two or three feet tall versus grow, you know, much taller than that. So, it's very site-specific, and I'm not sure, I'm not that familiar with actually the history of this particular site, because I just recently became aware of it. But, most people, as some of the people have said, the wild nature, native plants tend to, when they become mature, provide really a visual excitement with nature, with kids, with, you know, you can still fish, you can have, you know, reach-out points. I mean, a lot of design things you can do to help accommodate, you know, a passive recreation out there.
And then, Joel, can you just, what are some of the other design that's happening around there?
Just to follow up, our specs that we put in the contract is that two-to-three-foot height limit.
Me, so.
And also, one of the gentlemen asked about the stone crop. We did respond to him in an email to explain that is around that fishing, outcrops, that's where the section of the stones that we had mentioned to him. And he got that email from Mike on that.
So, Joel, to understand you correctly, the highest plant at the, before it drops off would be two to three feet? Or is that also going, some of those plants want to go into the water as well, correct?
Correct. It would go through the water and up the hill a little bit.
So, at the highest point, where you're on the grass, the highest it would be, based on the plant selection, would be about three feet?
Yes, ma'am.
And I guess one thing to clarify there is the, there's outcropping, because I've seen that. And so, there's outcropping points where people can fish from, which there aren't native, so they can stand out on the outcropping.
Yes, so you can get, you don't have to wade through the natural.
I saw that. I just wanted to make sure that that was addressed. Any other comments from the board?
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that? Trustee Hewitt?
The, George, I just want to get something clear in my head, that is, we have an agreement when this was, when this was established, there was a, in my mind, a contract between MWRD and the village, where we said we would do this, and then they okayed the zoning and all that for, to get, to let Eagle Ridge go forward. So, we've got a contract with the MWRD to have this native grass or whatever. And if we were, I mean, it would probably take a long battle to get that changed at MWRD, or, you know, it's a slow boat to China, I think. But, the, we just can't ignore this contract. What other agreements are we going to, can we ignore? I mean, this is just, we've signed to it, we're bound to it, and I wish we could just say, "Oh, don't worry about it, go ahead." It's not that easy. We've got, if we start deciding to ignore these things, it's more than just this one little problem, it's going to be a bigger problem. So, I wish there was a way, you know, another workaround around it outside of going to MWRD, but I think that's a serious issue for me.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton.
With this proposal that, I've got several questions for staff. First of all, was there ever a meeting with the residents who surround the pond? I know what the answer is, but just for the record, George?
So, Joel, it was just letters that were sent out?
And in that letter, it said that you were putting in riprap?
So, the letter included outcrops?
Correct. The outcrops area had that riprap.
And that said that specifically in the letter, so nobody could misunderstand that you weren't talking about the whole pond being riprap? I didn't see the letter, so I don't know what it said. So, I'm just asking to wonder, find out where the misunderstanding from the residents was from the letter that staff sent out.
Well, we did, we did say, "If there's any questions, they can reach out to us," and we answered those questions related to that riprap.
So, but you never held like a meeting like we do with the parks and stuff like that?
No, because of COVID-19, we weren't in that process of gathering a large people together in a group.
So, with the, with the suggestion here of having the HOA take this over, why would they take that burden on when, if you're saying that MWRD is saying that it has to be the natural plantings? Why would they want to take something over that they can't do what they want anyway?
I mean, this is just an option for, we know that the native planting buffer zone is the most environmental, is the most economical approach. We know that MWRD approves of this. Now, will they approve of a riprap, and then additional treatments to the water, or whatever else that needs to be required? Maybe. Maybe they will. I mean, they'd have to go through that whole process. But, it's, at this point, we're really limited in our options. We know that our permit does not allow turf grass. So, we can, we have to do something. There's a soil erosion going on. Is there something else that MWRD would approve above and beyond what's the minimum requirement? Maybe. But, that is something that the homeowners association then would have to take on that cost. And it was mentioned in the supplement, but it's worth repeating, there's 550 stormwater basins in Orland Park, of which 170 of those are maintained by the village. You can just imagine, you know, it's a very difficult job, it's a very costly job. And that is why the board in 2011 said that the best, the most economical, most environmentally, best way to manage these would be through native plantings. So, if we have to look at all of our 170 and do them at three times the cost, we're not going to be able to do that. So, if the homeowners association, if the village, this is the plan, if the village wants to provide the 91, and the homeowners association wants to do something above and beyond that, that meets MWRD approvals, and I don't know what that is, then this is at least an option for them.
So, they, who would have to go to MWRD to get the approval changed?
So, I'm...
First of all, we need to find out who put the grass in and violated, and they should be fined. Go ahead.
Well, I, you know, try to figure out what happened in '93.
I've got a feeling somebody in this audience knows, but go ahead.
Okay. So, I mean, obviously, we would help as much as we can. If the homeowners association is interested in taking this route, you know, our staff has very good relationships with MWRD, and we could, we would be sure to help with that.
So, the motion that's before us this evening is to approve the homeowners association taking over, and we give them the $91,000?
No, that is not what's in front of you. What's in front of you is to change our ordinance to give homeowners the option...
To do that.
To do so if they so choose to. It gives homeowners association an option to take it over if they want. Doesn't require them to. We would still do what we have planned, what we've put in, what you and trustee Dodge, I think, have voted on in 2011.
Correct, we did.
And probably before that even, that, you know, that have been popped in place for a long time. So, and you probably were the only one that was on the board in '93 when this was approved to begin with, that approved this, with this particular plantings. So...
That might have been before me, but that's okay.
So, you know, at the end of the day, all we're doing with this is just adding this to the code to give, in all circumstances, in the future, every time we do this, it gives people a choice, and it gives them an option.
Right. And one of the reasons that we did approve that in 2011 was because we had so many residents who were violating what was planted, and they were mowing the ponds down because they wanted a manicure look and everything. And it was causing a lot of erosion and costing the village a lot of money. So, that's why we did it in 2011. So, I think, I think there's a lack of communication with the residents, and that's part of it, and that creates a lot of problems when communication, I mean, we have lack of communication amongst the seven of us sitting up here, and you and Greg. So, I think that needs to be cleared up, maybe since we hold meetings like this, and there's other gatherings in the village, I think you could have your meeting with the residents and find out what they want to do as a homeowners association. And if they choose that they don't want to do this, and they don't want a special assessment, and WM, I mean, MWRD says, "No, I'm sorry, you have to plant the plant," I think Lou would be an expert person to bring in, that's what he does for a living, and get the plants that wouldn't grow any more than two to three feet. I mean, what's out here? Those plants are more than two to three feet, but there again, nobody lives there. I mean, so I think that's different. But, I think the key here is communication with the residents.
Yeah, and this is approved, that's obviously something that we have to do. We have to, you know, at the end of the day, we'd first have to, the first step is the HOA would have to agree that this is something they want to take on. And then, the second step would be the establishment of the backup, the SSA, which would also require the residents' consensus on that as well. So, it would be a multi-tiered process, but the first step would be, does the HOA even want to entertain taking this over?
Correct. There again, communication to the residents involved. There again, communication to the residents involved.
Mayor Pecor?
Trustee Dodge.
My number, I've, my first comment, I'll come back for some additional ones. George, can you back up to the diagram you showed in this presentation?
Sure.
Yeah, we don't have that slope as diagrammed at this pond, correct?
There's a slope.
Oh, yeah, it's not this slope.
No, this is, this is just a rendering.
Yeah.
This is not Eagle Ridge.
And then, so, you know, I, I think in certain areas with that type of gentle slope, sure, if properly maintained, this could be attractive to some. Let me repeat that. In certain places with that kind of slope, properly maintained, this could be attractive to some. So I don't think that this particular illustration is going to work in this area. I mean, I would echo Trustee Fenton's comments about how we've addressed some of the residents' concerns on this one as well. And I guess broadly, you know, if the Water Reclamation District hasn't paid attention to this for 30 years, I'm not expecting them to show up tomorrow.
Just while they might now.
And so, we do have, this is an issue, right? You can't not agree shoreline erosion in this part of the country, given the soils and the winds and what we have to do by rules established by any one combination of Army Corps of Engineers, Water Reclamation District, or I think even IDNR sometimes sticks their hand up in the air in terms of water flow. So we do have a whole bunch of jurisdictions over our head kind of driving some of our decisions here. And so what I'm going to propose, after we have some more board discussion, is quite frankly, I'd like to see this tabled and brought to a committee the whole where you can have a more open dialogue with the residents and find some other options, because the ordinance as presented is too binary for my preference. It's our way, because you've said a number of times, George, we're trying to get to the lowest cost. Well, sure, that's a reasonable thing to do in government, but so is a good solution at a reasonable cost, given resident input. I don't know if we've fully given a perspective to those other options, so I'd like to see those kind of conversations. And I guess it's the same comment I had when we passed the recent subdivision with the private pond. There is an inherent issue of fairness here, because effectively, if the homeowners agreed to this transfer, it's we say, you pay. Because we and/or other levels of government are basically ultimately going to come in and dictate the maintenance standards, and you, the homeowners, would then be on the hook to pay for it, whereas a whole bunch of other ponds in Orland are paid for taxpayer expense. So where I'm going with all this is, we may not have good choices, right? Just want to say that to the residents. We might have to do certain things in certain ponds of, parts of such a big pond, but I think there's more aesthetically appealing solutions. It might not be the lowest cost option, there may have to be a discussion with the homeowners association on how we do this, but I don't think it's fair for you to take on essentially a public liability that you then have very little control over in the future by law with all these stacks of government over your head, and meanwhile, everybody else in Orland has their pond maintained, and you're paying the same property tax rate. So my central point to the board is, we don't have images like this. We do have a cost problem, we do have a long-term problem. I don't think we've done enough to engage the residents and seek other options, because I think it's, we're going to put in these, these plantings, trust us, we're going to maintain it, because that's what we heard from a number of other residents, you go to Pond A, you go to Pond B, and the weeds, the native plantings are a lot taller, because we perhaps as a village didn't do our job. So this is a bit of a mess, and, you know, I'd love to hear from the rest of the board, but I think that we should put this off to committee, really take a long look at it, and make it a blanket policy for the whole village that addresses some of the fundamental unfairness about the cost and control of these options. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Just had a question.
See, you got Cenius?
George, have we done the riprap in any other ponds? I mean, what is Orland's protocol? What have we been doing with ponds?
So, Joe, maybe you can talk about, but the 2011 program is a native planting buffer zone program. That's, that is the option.
Since that program was initiated, has any pond in Orland been done differently than that? They've all followed that standard?
Yep, since 2011.
Okay, then I think an analogy of some people are paying more or less really isn't the case if all of the other ponds are being done that way.
And we're still, the, the original plan is still the same. The village is going to pay for the native plantings in this one, and in perpetuity, the village will maintain it. That is, that's not changing unless there's, and they want, the HOA wants to do something above and beyond that.
Any other comments? Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Calandrello.
Just, I guess, I see two issues we're dealing with right here in one discussion. A, the overall policy issue of pond takeover, so shifting the burden, if you want, a different type of things, and I think we need to have that long conversation. But the second conversation, as we see residents here with a particular issue of Eagle Ridge Pond, I guess I'll try to divide it myself, so we, I think it's clear. First of all, I do, I would support the idea of transferring some ponds over depending on a lot of different issues, but more importantly, I think this is highlighting, and George, we talked about this, I know COVID happened, but again, our community meetings, I think we need to do a little better job of that, you know, seeing down with the residents. I mean, we used to have meetings for every park before we built the park, you know, so I think, especially when issues like this, I think we're seeing the breakdown in communication. So I guess I do like the idea of talking a little more policy-wise regarding this, but more importantly, you know, it's almost October, I don't think we need a rush to get Eagle Ridge done, so I would, that, I guess, are my two thoughts and two issues, because I think we have two issues going on right now.
Any other comments?
Why not? Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney.
So this plan was put in place in 2011. It's been proven cost-effective, safe, and repeatable across the village. We've incorporated best practices. We've, you know, we've aligned our codes, we've contracted this workout, because it was proven that we didn't have the resources to be able to keep up with it. And it's been successful since 2011. So, you know, if we're able to do this since 2011, I guess, what has changed in the communication plan? Have we been communicating with the residents? Have we been having meetings with them since 2011 to make sure they knew what was going on with their ponds? I'm talking about as we did all of the ponds throughout Orland Park, not Eagle Ridge Pond Four specifically, so I'm just curious what we did then.
I think the question is, is are we following the same policies we've been following since 2011? And the same procedures? I know you haven't been here.
Yes.
Most of the folks haven't, but.
I am new, but I, talking with Mike and Gary Couch, who is, used to be the director, they did have, on those other ponds, they would usually have a meeting with them and give them a update, because we did, in a different environment today, we did do sending out the letter. The letter was notifying that this project is coming, and if they had any questions, to reach out to Mike, and Mike will either email him back and give him clarifications or any other information, like heights of, of planting or outcrops, or what was there that if they had. And we've answered all of those questions.
Right. And I think the V3 plan was part of that letter too, right? The, the little handout?
Actually, what we were doing around the pond, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton.
To answer Trustee Maloney's question, in the past, we always did have meetings of all the residents that were impacted by any pond restoration that was going on, and some of our ponds have ripraps that haven't been changed yet, some ponds don't back up to residents, some ponds are, you know, municipal, you know, in municipal areas, within municipal building areas, some of them are by the parks. But in the past, prior to Mike, prior to yourself, there was always a community meeting. Granted, there was COVID-19, you couldn't have your meeting, but I think maybe at this time, there needs to be a meeting, and I don't, I personally don't understand what the rush is for this tonight, to pass this, because Eagle Ridge is specifically named in this particular ordinance, whatever you want to call this.
Well, what's, the only thing that's happening tonight is just approving that, that option, that alternate option for this project and for other projects going forward when this comes up. So it's not specific, this, this alternate is not specific to Eagle Ridge, this would be an ongoing.
I know, but Eagle Ridge is mentioned in it. So I think there's more work that needs to be done before this happens.
Mr. Chairman?
Who was that? Trustee Maloney?
Yeah, I was, still had the floor, so thank you for answering the question. So if we decided to go the riprap option, I'm not saying that's the best choice, we talked about $298,000. That doesn't even include ongoing costs. What are the ongoing costs that would associate with riprap?
So, you know, and Ahmad, if you could take it back a couple slides to the Morton Arboretum, in their report, this, that green comes out of their report, and obviously, this is, what this assumes is a half, half acre circular pond in a, so what you can see here is that there is, the ongoing costs are greater for turf and stone than it is for the native plantings. That's why at the end of the day, if you look at the total tenure cost, the tenure costs for the native plantings are lower than those two other options, and it's, as you can see, it's primarily because of the ongoing maintenance.
So you can equate riprap then to being like, let's say, the landscaping stone in your backyard on a smaller scale. Every few years, you got to add some more. Every few years, you add more. Pretty soon, now you've got six, six inches of compacted rock, you have to dig it out and start over?
Yes.
Similar analogy?
Yep. And this, the, the other ones also require additional algae control. And Joe, what do we do right now for algae control for ponds like this?
So with the ponds, we do have to treat the ponds if algae is growing, so we do that with the weather, and that costs additional dollars as well for treating the water.
And, Joe, quick question. We, we maintain this pond, right, and water quality, all that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And I guess, one final question. On the same night we voted this one in, back in May, we voted in five other ponds. Have we heard from anybody around those ponds and having issues with the changes?
We've received some feedback from Parkview, Parkview Estates?
Parkview Estates.
Yeah.
Parkview Estates.
Yeah, and as I recall, I think you briefed me on that feedback, it was, I like it for everyone else's pond, but not for mine? Was that the feedback you got from that one person?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mayor Pecor?
Trustee Dodge?
Just, you know, the issue, again, in my mind, is the way we have been approaching this. This has always been a contentious issue. It's always been an expensive issue for the reasons I alluded to earlier, and so I have some concerns about, we could have found a way, or I think we should, quite frankly, find a way to hold a neighborhood meeting. We've used Zoom before, let's do it again. You know, if there's 200 people that want to participate in a Zoom meeting with selective representatives in the room with staff, you know, we could potentially do that. I don't have a fundamental issue with the idea of someone, a homeowners association saying, hey, we'd like to do X, but I don't know if we've ever really explained to all the homeowners what the true long-range implications are of a special service area attached to their property when they go to sell it, or on their property tax bills. So the village notoriously has issues with homeowners associations not being viable. So we do have a long-term issue, we've got a big issue, and my central point is, I don't think we've tackled the fundamental fairness of all of this, right? There's a cost, and there's, you're taxed at a certain rate that contributes to the village, up to now, and in many areas, you've been paying for a lot from those tax dollars, including ponds. If we're going to this as a generalized policy, then let's do all the math, let's get everybody who's affected to understand, if your homeowners association takes this over, you're going to be on the hook when, you know, your neighborhood kid throws some of the riprap into the, into the water there, which, let's just face it, kids throw stones in water, it's kind of not, not that surprising. So I think we've got a bigger issue. I don't think this is as thought out as it needs to be, so with that, I would move that we table or refer this to the committee the whole, to have a neighborhood meeting, seek other options, and address longer-term implications.
Okay, you've moved to table this motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call the roll for tabling this motion.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Cenius?
No.
Trustee Maloney?
No.
Mayor Pecor?
No. So the motion is not tabled. Are there any other comments? Okay, before I call the vote on this, I have a few closing, I have quite a few closing comments and a few questions to try and clean some stuff up. So our policy was approved in 2011, correct?
Correct.
Seven oh vote? I've looked it up, it's a seven oh vote.
Okay.
Save you the hassle.
All right.
Okay, so we've, we've done how many of these ponds since that time? Forty?
How many?
Any disagreements on doing the ponds in that way in the last nine years?
Over forty. None.
Okay, just, the, as I saw briefed here, it's about $200,000 extra to install the stone riprap project. Does that include the maintenance over 10 years, or is that just the installation?
No, that's just installation.
Okay, so then we have the maintenance cost on top of that. Okay. Based on the briefing here, native plantings were planted in 1993.
Correct.
Somewhere in between then and now, I think someone back here might have had an answer to that, but I don't know that it's relevant, because somehow it changed. It doesn't really matter how it changed, it changed. At the end of the day, there's a permit, just like if we issued a permit, someone changed that, we would require them to go back and correct that. So MWRD can make us correct that, and I'm assuming they can also fine us for that? Is that correct?
Krishid?
For damages, they can.
Okay, so if we don't correct it proactively beforehand, they come out, they see it, they can, they can fine us for it. Okay. And anything that gets done out there to handle these shore erosion, and I heard people say that there weren't erosion program, problems, but at the same time, they said it's only eroding at the shoreline. That's exactly what the problem is, it's eroding at the shoreline. So any of that that needs to be fixed needs to meet both our codes and, and higher level, they need to meet MWRD codes, correct? Our codes meet MWRD codes, do they exceed them, or are they pretty much the same?
They're pretty much the same.
Okay, so essentially, we have to meet MWRD codes. Okay. Planting native plants addresses erosion, addresses water quality. It definitely improves safety at the water's edge, because with slopes that steep, you slide into that, it's going to be, it can be challenging for the, for people who have difficulty getting out. I know Lou's out back there, not on his head. Lou and I, Lou knows more about this than I do, but I do have some level of knowledge on this stuff. It does reduce maintenance costs, there's no question about that. I believe Trustee Dodge said something about that that doesn't look anything like the slope. No, it doesn't, and actually, closely mowed lawn along those edges are far more dangerous. They're more dangerous for people walking on them, they're far more dangerous and more difficult to maintain. So actually, you usually see more, and Lou, you could correct me if I'm wrong here, but you see more native plantings around steeper slopes than you do, you'll see more of the turf grass potentially along a flat slope than something that's steep.
Some lots of designs that you care about.
Right. But generally speaking.
You're now preparing to walk the area of plant from wet to dry.
Right, but generally speaking, closely mowed turf on a very steep area is pretty difficult to maintain.
The rest of the agreement was for maintenance.
Right, okay. So, so 27 years ago or so, you know, this was approved. 11 years ago, we instituted a new plan, for good reason, we looked at it at a length, we took it at great length, we looked at the policies, implemented best practices. We have 500 ponds, 170 we maintain, or 550, at 200,000 each, that's about $110 million extra to repair ponds. I'm not sure that we can afford that. In fact, I'm sure we can't afford that. So, okay, so. It's important to point, you know, it's, it is important to point out, this is nine years ago. I know there were somebody yelling at me about it, it was nine years ago this was approved, it's been put in, at how many ponds since then, in those nine years, 40? It's been put in at, how many ponds since then in those nine years, 40? 40, okay. So, and the biggest problem here is that somehow this was allowed to happen over 27 years to violate the permit, which should never happen under the village's watch, but it did. So we're correcting it. I like the fact that you're doing some outcropping for fishing because I do think it's important to incorporate ways to use the area as well. We know it's the least expensive way to do stuff. But at the same time, at the same time, I also understand, believe me, I understand because I've been through this before with HOA landscape designs or apartment landscape designs or condo, et cetera, where there's a lot of people involved. Not everyone has the same opinion on what is nice and what is not nice. Some people like concrete right up against an edge. Some people like natives. Some people like trees. Everyone has a different opinion when it comes to landscaping. Lou, am I correct on that one? Pretty much? Very difficult to get everyone to agree. I think what we're doing here is giving Eagle Ridge and everyone an option. It's not an option they have to take. I disagree with the, we're forcing this upon someone. We're not forcing it upon anyone. And the, I guess, the insinuation that we are forcing this on someone is just absolutely not true because we're not forcing this on anyone. We're giving someone an option. If an HOA decides, and it's not easy, and HOA has to get a pretty large percentage of their HOA to approve to take something over, they have to take it over. They also have to agree to the SSA. So we're not forcing it on anyone. But it's an option for them. And we do have some private HOAs that do maintain their own pond. So we have some of those that have decided to do that. And they decided to incur the cost, and they do a relatively nice job of it, the few that I know of. So I'm more than willing to give people an option. You're giving people a choice. This amendment to the code allows them to take ownership of the pond, but they have to, they are aware that it will include future maintenance. And they can submit their own design and implement it. But they should also be aware that they have to still meet our codes and MWRD codes. So that's an important factor in this. I think it's fair that we're contributing what we would have contributed to that for saying, "Hey, we would do $91,000." But we're not going to spend $298,000 on something. We can do $91,000. That's not fair to the rest of the residents in Orland Park. But it's perfectly fair, if you decide to take this over, to contribute that $91,000 because we were going to do that anyways. But as a board, one of the things that I'm concerned about with this is that we ensure that the remainder of the residents in that HOA are protected from future costs, including the SSA, which they have to approve. Because I'm very familiar with an HOA, and a smaller percentage can say, "Well, this is what we want." And if they force that upon, and I want to make sure that the entire HOA, that it's a majority, and I believe it has to be a supermajority mostly by HOA law to take ownership. But at least a majority are agreeing to this because it would be unfair for, say, a third of an HOA to say, "We want to take ownership of this." And then two-thirds get stuck with the HOA dues. They get stuck with the SSA in the future if it's not maintained. You know, again, like I said, this is giving people an option. Change this ordinance does not change the Eagle Ridge project one bit. It gives the Eagle Ridge, Eagle Ridge III HOA an option. So I don't see anything, there's nothing here to me that indicates that we should not approve this, change the ordinance, because it's just giving people an option. It's not forcing anything on anybody. And we're still following the ordinances we already have in place. Now regarding looking at other things, I've heard this about almost every issue for the last three months, that we need to send it back to staff and have this big overall review. Well, the problem with prioritizing every single issue as something we have to have a deep dive into is then you have no priorities. And there's no way staff can do all that. This does take a lot of time. Property annexation, good example time. So this has been happening every meeting for two months. Okay. So my suggestion would be to include in the next budget, and we'll talk about it in the budget hearing, but the plan for strategic planning, which will set a schedule for when we should be looking and reviewing these various policies, which include both ponds, it includes road programs, it includes parks, it includes all of that. So we should have a strategic plan that actually puts this in place as opposed to, you know, just saying every time an issue comes up, we need to have a deep dive because we just frankly cannot do that. Regarding meetings, obviously COVID's been a challenge. Obviously, this meeting tonight is video, audio, so, you know, the village is very transparent with what they do. It's been a challenge, I know, with COVID. I also know that historically, I mean, we have how many road programs, how many potholes, how many, you know, where we, crack sealing that we do, we have all that. I get emails on all of that, people are mad that we're not doing it. And we should have a meeting about all that. Frankly, we cannot, it is not possible for the village to have a meeting for every capital project that we do. Now with that said, we've already talked about having some kind of a policy for how we're doing our major park renovations so that we incorporate residents so that they can have some kind of a meeting with staff beforehand because I think it would potentially alleviate a lot of these problems. We should probably do the same thing for any kind of ponds because we know it's a potential issue. And even though it's only an issue on one out of however many we're doing, it's still an issue. We're going to make sure that we incorporate that into our future processes. And I know we have a trustee here that really loves processes. Let's make sure it's part of the process. It hasn't been part of the, it hasn't been officially encoded as part of our process in the past. Let's make sure it's in there as part of our process. So after we vote on this, I would encourage you, George, to make sure it's part of the strategic plan as far as when we're going to review all these things. And then make sure that having meetings like this, and there's nothing stopping us from having another meeting with the Eagle Ridge III folks as far as what options there are. But it's not an option to spend more than $91,000. That's really not an option. But that's our option as far as the village doing it. It's not fair to the rest of the village to throw an extra $200,000 because we certainly can't do that across all of our ponds at over $100 million. We just cannot do that. But certainly reasonable to have a meeting with them, discuss all the concerns, see if there's some kind of a happy medium, add a few more outcropping, something like that, that would address some of these issues. Okay? So with that, I'll call the roll on this amendment to this ordinance.
Trustee Katzenis?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
I just have one legal question before I vote. I just want to make clarification that this ordinance is just an amendment. It doesn't tie anybody to anything. It's just offering an option.
That's correct.
Okay. Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
No.
Trustee Calendrell?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye. Motion carries six to one.
Roof repairs at Public Works Building, co-op proposals?
Mr. Chairman?
Chairman?
Trustee Maloney?
I move to approve a warning, the proposal titled, "Proposal for 2020 Roofing Improvements Administration and V&amp;E Roofs, dated 9/16/2020 to Mycore Roofing of Illinois Incorporated of St. Charles, Illinois, for an amount not to exceed $352,350 through the NIPA Joint Purchasing Contract Number 1-809-03-305537."
Second.
Any questions or comments? My only comment is, I'm glad we're getting this done. And I also want to thank the board and thank staff because we changed the way we were doing capital budgeting last year. This fell below the line. And as you recall, we came up with a whole new way to look at capital budgeting because there's no way that having a roof that's leaking should fall below the capital budget line. So good job to the board and to all of the, all of the staff for making this happen. Call the roll.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Katzenis?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calendrell?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye. Motion carries seven oh.
Pete's Fresh Market Inducement Agreement?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katzenis?
I move to approve a sales tax sharing inducement agreement with Pete's Fresh Market as outlined above and to be incorporated into their final development agreement pending approval of the zoning, special use, and building permits.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katzenis?
Super excited if Pete's Market comes here. It's a great store. So look forward to doing what we can to welcome them like we've welcomed others in the Village of Orland Park. So thank you, staff, for all your hard work on this.
And if I could, Stephanie Drummonas, she is with Pete's Market, and we're, that'd be great. If you can just, if you want to just maybe say a couple of words about your project?
Everybody? I'm Stephanie Drummonas. I'm the second-generation owner of Pete's Fresh Market. What do you want me to talk about?
When you're going to open?
All right, that's the number one question. So you guys have been moving fairly quickly, and I, you know, it's been a pleasure so far working with this board and the mayor and the administration and the staff. So you guys have, since the Art Van, you know, went BK, as of late, we're still in the midst of kind of getting our process, or getting our space back. We already started drawing the store. We met with some board members and the mayor and staff, and we are off to the races. So our hope, if everything goes according to plan, is that, you know, we draw the store, we get all architectural plans set. We hope to be in for review aggressively by the end of the year if we can get, pull it off. I know there's a lot of engineering that we have to do that takes time. You know, it's a six-week, eight-week turnaround time with our internal engineering from our MEP plans, mechanical, electrical, and plumbing. So we're going to move as quickly as possible. So if we're in by the end of the year, I think that would be a huge milestone to give it to you guys to review, we bounce back to us, we go back and forth. Once we have permit in our hand, if we can time it up for a spring shovel in the ground, we usually will take about 12 months to open. It's not going to be, you know, the Art Van did a nice job with infrastructure and the facade, but it's not a pizza market. So, you know, we have to do all refrigeration, plumbing, mechanical, you know, the whole shebang. It has to feel and look like a pizza market from top to finish. We don't want to feel any like, anything like a Dominique's that preceded the Art Van. It was a furniture store, and now we want to make it feel and look like a brand-new pizza market. So things take time. I think we've used the analogy before, pregnancy takes time. So, you know, let the baby cook a little bit, and we plan on opening as soon as we possibly can. We usually take about 12 months from permit, and if we can do it in 10 months, we will. And then we take about 60 to 90 days to stock and staff. So opening in 2022, given that timeframe, if anything happens and persists with COVID, I think we're kind of all ready to go back to, you know, at least the new normal. So we're really excited. We've owned this property since 2011. We actually bought the 143rd in La Grange, the old Terry Mercury, to put our store there. Things happened, and, you know, when Art Van went bankrupt, it was, you know, unfortunate. It was an anchor for that center. So we're happy that we had the option of backfilling and, you know, using Plan B, which I think is now the fan favorite. So thank you for you guys' support. We're happy to be here. We're excited. We're South Siders. So, you know.
Thank you.
Happy to come back home. All right, guys.
Thank you so much, Stephanie.
And trust you up here for questions, or?
Well, the board will still have some potentially comments and maybe some questions.
I'll just linger over here.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
Just want to say congratulations, welcome to town. And I'm really grateful that you're taking a space that's currently vacant, and you've got a huge parking lot over there that just needs a little repair here and there. But it's wonderful when you see businesses come in and fill up our vacant spots, too.
Mayor Pico? Any other comments? Trustee Dodge?
Thank you, right? Good luck, right? So glad to see this is moving forward, happy to, happy to see it. I've got a couple of questions for, I think, Klein, Thorpe, and Jenkins, or George. Just making sure I understand, I think it's section three of the agreement. So up to $3 million or 25% of what they expend, or 10 years? So what governs? That we cap to 10 years, 50% of the sales tax they produce is certified by the state of Illinois, correct?
Correct. So the, so it's, the max rebate is $3 million, but it could be less than that depending on the project costs, but it will not be more than 25%. The 10 years is the opportunity to recover that, so.
Because the reason I'm asking, George, it says, "Until such time as Pete shall have recovered," "shall," I think that's a pretty strong legal word, 25% of the cost of the project. So that's why I'm asking, and I want to hear it again specifically. I have no problem helping. We help businesses all the time. I just want to make sure I understand the legals here.
My understanding is that it's the sooner of. So if you guys, if we get to $3 million in five years, then it's five years. But if it takes us 15 years, it's only 10 years. That's my understanding of the agreement.
That's correct. And the maximum that they can recover is $3 million, assuming $12 million in improvements.
And who is responsible for verifying that to some future board, that they did spend $12 million? This is the same conversation that we had with you about the recent deals. Who certifies the data?
That's the village. So staff certifies it, and that includes, you know, the waiver of liens and all of the paperwork that goes along with that. So that is part of the process.
Sworn statement.
Got it. So, you know, previously, we've done these kind of deals, and I wish you all the luck that you are done in five years.
Thank you, yeah.
So good luck.
Yeah.
Any other comments? So I'll make it quick. I want to thank staff for working on this. Stephanie, I want to thank you and your father, Jimmy. I really enjoyed our conversations. And I really enjoyed meeting you both at your offices, and your dad had great stories. It's, maybe not all of you understand, but business people understand, listening to people talk about businesses that they've built and they're passionate about, it doesn't matter if it's a fishery or a construction firm or Microsoft or Pete's Fresh Market. Those owners have phenomenal stories to tell, and you can just tell the passion and love they have for their business, and Jimmy was no exception. And it's just, you could sit and listen to those stories all day. So I want to thank you for helping get this done. I also want to thank Trustee Katzenis for your help with this as well. And it's a great addition to the Village of Orland Park. It shows to everyone that Orland Park is the place where businesses want to be. Even during the COVID pandemic, we're still able to fill these things. So it's just great news for Orland Park. So thank you so much, and thank your dad for us as well. With that, call the roll.
Trustee Katzenis?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calendrell? Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye. Motion carries seven oh.
Budget adjustments, third quarter 2020?
Mr. Chairman? Trustee Dodge?
No, that was the other guy.
Oh, Trustee Maloney? I can't hear them except through the mic now.
I move to approve an increase to the fiscal year 2020 expenditure budget of the general fund in the amount of $113,500 and a decrease in the fiscal year 2020 expenditure budget in the Recreation and Parks Fund in the amount of $13,500.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
George, what was cut from recreation for the 13-5?
Kevin, do you want to, the question is, what was the, what was the reduction for, in the 13-5?
I believe those were other design fees that were contemplated in the Parks, in the Recreation and Parks Fund that were to be redirected to the design of the, of this boardroom.
So it wasn't any programs or parks?
No.
Anything like that? And then who made the decision to develop print and develop the senior program thing?
So that actually, the board, the original adjustment for the senior newsletter was approved at the June 15th board meeting. So that's where it started. This is being brought before you because of the additional printing costs before the end of the year. So that was approved in June of 2020.
Okay, so a question with it, I read the whole thing. Why are we reproducing what's already in the hands of the senior citizens? With the exception of the mayor's page and the chief's page. Everything else is redundant. It's either in the program guide, or it's in the information that's put out by the township or information that's put out by plows.
Sure. So what happened during the COVID, during COVID, staff in the village was, we thought
we were doing a very good job of getting information out to all the residents, but we were using electronic means. We were using the social media, we were using the website. And what we were getting back as feedback was that the senior population was not getting that information. We thought we were doing a good job. They were not getting that information. So that's why in June, that was, the approval occurred for that. It's going, this is a specific senior focused document so that we can reiterate that information that is just for the seniors.
I know, but the information that I mentioned that's redundant, they already do get in hand.
So they get some of it. They, they'll get the recreation guide. They don't get the safety. There is no, we do a lot of safety stuff, ruse, you know, the fake utilities.
Okay, so I'll clarify. Half of what was in there is redundant. It's in the program guide, it's in the township newsletter that comes out and it's the information that, because there's even a Plous section in there that Plous sends out.
I don't know what's in the township, but I know that Plous has, is working with us specifically for, you know, and they're very excited about this as well, to be able to get more information into the seniors' hands.
Okay, so why are we repeating our stuff? Like all the programs that were listed and stuff like that? I mean, that was just like pages taken out of our program guide.
Those programs are specific to seniors, so it just emphasizes the specific. I mean, I think what you're saying is, and what I'm hearing is, we don't want to provide that addition, that specific information.
No, I'm just saying, it almost makes it look like, and I'm a senior, that I didn't read the program guide and look up what senior programs were, so now you have to send me another publication to tell me what specifically are for seniors, when I already had it and already looked it up.
Okay.
Especially since we're doing this because of cost. I just, again, I was just wondering why it's redundant.
Again, it's, the whole reason is this is a very specific paper document that's going to go to seniors. It has specific senior information that, for services and all items that the village can provide. And it's going to those seniors that have purchased senior vehicle stickers. So it's a very specific group of individuals. So it's not every home in Orland's going to be getting this. It's just those that bought senior vehicle stickers.
Correct. But you just, you go a roundabout way, but you don't answer the specific question. It's redundant, that's my opinion, so that's okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge?
George, when our call earlier said the funds are coming out of fund balances?
Yeah, they're, so in the, in the supplement, a portion of it is coming from fund balance transfer. And then a portion is the decrease in the expenditures for the consulting services.
So we're moving money around and this is a net new expense, correct? For our previous decision?
For the senior newsletter, other than what was approved previously in June, yes. But there's also, there are also police protective gear that's part of this.
No, no, I get that. I have less issue with police protective gear than I do this newsletter and here's why. It's not that I'm opposed to increasing our communication flow to seniors, but I think that we're right on top of the budget. Why don't we just roll this into the budget conversations and then talk about broadly going back towards targeted paper communications to all of our residents? Because I think there's a number of people, not necessarily seniors, that would prefer printed materials. So I just want a broader conversation. So I'm assuming that we can have that as part of our budget process?
We will definitely, that will definitely be something we would put on the agenda for the budget process.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
I just want to say, anything for police protective gear, additional cost is a good thing. And I think seniors, the more information we give to the public, as evidenced by the pond issue, the better. So the more seniors get, you know, to be aware of the different programs, not everybody, you know, will look at the, maybe not look at it, maybe they get Orland Township, but we have to be independent of that and notify our residents and particularly seniors what's going on in the community. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Calandrello?
Just wanted to definitely support this. I think this is something we should talk about. I know when we cut the annual report and, I don't know if it was quarterly or three or four year, I think that was one thing that we still need to communicate with residents. A lot of residents don't go on Facebook. And also, and you could talk to my wife about it, when you have the program guide in your hands, it's earmarked and I think families enjoy that, too. I know we do the, we still do direct guide, but I think it's something that, I'm glad we're doing this for seniors, but I think we, next cycle, next, we should think about putting it back in because I think it's not only good to get the information out, but it's a transparency issue to me. So I feel like, I'm glad we're doing this. I think we should go back to what we had with the annual reports or, I think it was three or four year plus the annual report. And I know we, as staff members, we created it, like we still, we have it, just printing, pressing print and sending out. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrello?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Brew Fest additional date?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
I move to approve a second date of tickets be made available to the general public for the 2020 Brew Fest.
Second. And before we have comments, if, George, if you could give a little background and then also have Dennis fill in some of the blanks.
So our, the Brew Fest was originally scheduled to occur on this past Saturday. And then a week ago, the village was visited by two individuals from the Illinois Liquor Commission, were asking some information regarding taste. This past Friday, five employees of Illinois Liquor Commission began going to village businesses that participated in the Taste Five. And so after our conversation on a week ago Friday, our attorney that helps with liquor related items reached out to the Illinois Liquor Commission, to their attorneys, to give them information about how we're following the governor's plan for liquor distribution. And so while that conversation is going on, these individuals are going to local businesses. So we, it was too close to the deadline and what we didn't want to do, and we weren't getting the necessary, the two-way communication at that point. So we rescheduled the Taste so that we can have that ability to have that dialogue with Illinois Liquor Commission. So the, the, not the Taste, the Brew Fest is still going on. We're working out the details right now. Our attorney from KTJ is, has sent out communication, but has not received any feedback. So we're still proceeding with it and what's before here now is just a second date for that as well because of the demand that we received the first time around with, with no marketing.
And Dennis, if you could fill in the blanks on the, on the Liquor Commission?
Yeah.
And because I know that, that, you know, we have some significant concerns with their interpretation of, of the new law that the legislature, the legislature didn't do much when they were in session for three days.
Jason, you want to step up? So this is my partner, Jason Geisinger. Jason is the one that gave the opinion regarding the Taste and the Brew Fest. He's the one that's been chatting with the Illinois Liquor Control Commission and can explain to you the rationale behind both of those events.
Sure. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, board. Just a little background on Illinois law with respect to liquor sales in the state. So under Illinois law, all liquor sales have to be approved by both the state Liquor Control Commission as well as the local Liquor Control Commissioner, which obviously here in Orland Park is the, the mayor. In previous years with respect to the Taste, the licensing structure that was used from a state perspective, a special event liquor license was issued by the state. And then similarly, a special event liquor license was issued by the local Liquor Control Commissioner. So it was licensed under both state law and village code in that fashion. This year, the Illinois State Commission was not issuing special event liquor licenses for general emission events such as the Taste and the Concert Series. However, the state commission did provide temporary guidance authorizing deliveries and other types of sales that promoted social distancing to take place. And this was something that was only in existence for the term of the governor's emergency declaration. I provided an opinion that under that authority, despite the fact that the state commission was not issuing special event liquor licenses, that the Taste could go on because it met the conditions of the temporary guidance in that the vendors at the Taste were state licensed retail liquor licensees and also licensed by the village. So we believe that that was going to be a permissible way to operate. Subsequent to the Taste, we were contacted, as George indicated, by the state commission and they apparently have a disagreement with the opinion that I gave with respect to their temporary guidance. They didn't give me a lot of detail in that regard. They simply said that that was not their interpretation. So where we are now is looking at an alternative method for conducting the Brew Fest. And it's a method that the state commission has indicated previously would be acceptable and that would be to have a state licensed caterer, a state licensed caterer provide the alcohol at the Brew Fest event. And then going back to my original point where you have to have a license at the state level as well as the local level, the state license would be that state issued retail caterer's license. And then from the local level, there would be a Class F local liquor license issued, which would, again, cover the event. And I'm happy to answer any questions of any members of the board.
So if anybody has any comments or questions this time?
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Malani? Oh. Trustee Dodge?
I can't hear anything except the mics and they sound the same.
Well, at least you picked the right hairline, brother.
Yeah. You sound very similar sitting here.
I don't, I don't have a problem with an event like this if people want to come out and do this. I don't even really have a problem with adding a second day. That doesn't, good. Hallelujah, let's go. Question for the attorney and for George. This design, when we've done this in the past, it was generally, you went up to a number of individual brew places to get your beer, correct?
I'm going to turn the fest. I'm going to talk, Ray, do you?
Distributing alcohol. This year, under the state license, the caterer would provide the alcohol and staff whose basket certified would serve the alcohol. We did some of that last year as well.
Okay, so I mean, I guess operationally, if you want to go there and you try, want to try a bunch of different samples from a number of places, you can get that, but it's going to come through one source, right?
I'd be correct. The caterer would provide it.
And then the individual brewer, which presumably has a license but is not authorized to be at this event under either state or local guidelines, is then selling that alcohol to our caterer and then they're reselling it?
The caterer would be buying the alcohol from three distributors. So in this area, there are three distributors that distribute the alcohol or the beer that we're going to purchase. So we selected 40 different samples and that's provided by these distributors.
Okay, so then that's pretty normal practice, correct? For a retail, a caterer to then sub-source their alcohol through a distributor, correct?
It is, yes.
And I guess then the question for the attorney, in your opinion, in the opinion of Klein, Thorpe and Jenkins, that checks all the box with the state?
Yes, I believe it does. In my communication with the state commission, I have asked them to confirm that and I'm waiting to hear back from them, but it is my opinion that the structure that I discussed, which would be a state licensed retail caterer providing the alcohol, would be permissible.
If they disagree, what happens?
If they disagree, well, then we're going to have to have a further discussion with them as to how to move forward.
Thank you. And just to follow up on that, if I, correct me if I'm misstating this, but they also, the legislature also weighed in on this and passed licensing that allows that state, that caterer with a liquor license to serve at ticketed seated events, correct?
I believe that's correct, yes.
And this is also a ticketed seated event. And, you know, that was for some of the stadiums and things that are, actually there are some that are operating now at that capacity, at, you know, limited capacities that are doing that. So it was one of the few things that the state legislature actually did when they were in session besides a budget, was they did pass some new liquor laws that gave us the ability to do this. Mr. Mayor? Trustee Healy?
Were our vendors penalized for providing service at this event?
To my knowledge, there's been no enforcement action taken by the state commission against the vendors. However, as George indicated, I know that the investigators have been out there asking them questions.
So at this point, one of them has been told that they will be fined and the other one was issued a ticket. I don't know what the fine on that ticket was. They have not gotten back to me at this point. At least three of the five Taste of Orland businesses were visited that I'm aware of.
Well, may I continue? I thought that the, I thought this event, it was very, social distancing was a primary thing there. The marks on the thing, that we handled it better than anybody could ever handle. I mean, we handled it very well. It sounds like this may be the heavy hand of government coming down on our, on our village. The, these people are, you know, I don't think they're done coming after our village for standing up to the governor and all that. This is a very happy event. It was great that everybody got together and it was a, I know there were no problems that I know of there. It was a very successful event. And I think it gets around to the lawsuit with the governor. And I'm proud that we're standing up and doing this law, this, you know, standing up for our businesses and our community. I, and I'm also proud that we voted to continue the lawsuit. I was, you know, I wish we were unanimous, that's okay. And I want to thank all the trustees who voted to continue the lawsuit, to fight this tyrant of a governor who seems to do whatever he wants. It was just a great thing to bring people together at it. And even when we voted, we can take a positive example from trustee Calandrello who overcame to politics and voted to maintain the lawsuit and to support our businesses and our people. This is, as a local government, I think we should help our citizens through this crisis time. And I'm all for putting on additional Brew Fest concerts or whatever. Let's get this, we have to provide a sense of normality now that it's been taken away by the government.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas?
I wanted to ask you counsel, you're talking about the Illinois Liquor Commission. The body of the Illinois Liquor Commission, how do you become a person on the Illinois Liquor Commission?
I believe they're appointed by the governor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Calandrello?
Just have a question for either way or George. Do we actually have a vendor yet that can help us with the state license?
We do. We have cutting edge catering out of Joliet and I believe they provided their license, which is under review.
Okay, good. I don't want to prove a double-donging event where we don't have a dance partner. So I've been to the Brew Fest, it's a great fest. I don't know if it's appropriate this time, but I just want to make sure we have our liquor license lined up.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Malani?
You know, given the circumstances, I think it's great that we're rescheduling this for the over 200 participants that kind of got cheated out of last weekend. Even better that we're going to give additional opportunities for people to enjoy this event on a second night. And what made it even better is now we have people that have a change of heart and are looking forward to seeing this event versus not having it. So that's an even better, better night for us here. So based on last year's attendance, it was 340, we should be able to probably easily sell out that second night. So appreciate you guys putting this together, using our, you know, low-cost village resources to, to do it over there at Public Works. I think it's, it's going to be even better. So thank you for putting this together.
Anything else? Any other comments? So I have a few comments on this and it's, it transcends the Brew Fest itself. Since the beginning of this pandemic, we've watched the governor engage in rhetoric intended to instill fear and to threaten residents and to threaten businesses. All of us, on more, all of us here on this board floor, on more than one occasion have asked the state and governor to share information that they are using to make decisions. At this time, the only modeling that the governor has shared has shown to be a gross exaggeration. He's shared nothing else. Case data is skewed on a regular basis. Nothing shows us more than the Friday before Labor Day when we suddenly had over 5,000 cases, I think more than 1,000 cases than we'd ever had before, including during the peak of this, reported by IDPH, the Friday before Labor Day. Clearly, this was to instill fear over a holiday weekend. Later, when pressed, only when pressed, the state admitted that they failed to report test results due to anomalies and there were approximately 150,000 tests that those cases test results due to anomalies, and there were approximately 150,000 tests that those cases were based on, which is triple any amount of tests we'd ever done before. We've all watched, and some of us have experienced, threat after threat. Mayors have been threatened, village presidents have been threatened, businesses have been threatened by DECO. We have the letters. We've witnessed rollbacks to our neighbors based on arbitrary test percentages, that none of this has been shared. And when asked, they say, "Well, it's serious, and we want people to know it's serious." Well, where's your actual data to support this? There wasn't any. And it's had a significant impact on our neighbors. We've all, everyone here, has asked on more than one occasion for the legislature to do their jobs. In the few days that they went back to work, they passed a budget with a massive deficit, but they also passed new liquor laws that allowed businesses to, among other things, deliver to outdoor events and serve certain outdoor events, as our attorney just mentioned. In doing so, the legislature created a law that the governor signed, that according to our attorneys, allows us to host Taste of Orland and concerts at Centennial West with the vendors, using the rules that they passed in their law. We did so, we did so safely. There have been no case spikes from any of these events. In fact, after being flat for months, they are trending back down over the last week, as have suburban Cook County COVID-related hospitalizations. The governor clearly does not like these events and has spoken out against events like these regularly with fear-mongering and threats. Last week, he decided to send his appointed Illinois Liquor Commission agents to Orland Park, sent five of them into businesses. Our attorneys just explained the conversations we were already having. And while we were having those discussions, he sent five of those agents into our businesses. That's unacceptable. Thus far, we know it's Beggars Pizza, Papa Joe's, and Square Kelt. They photographed everything, they asked for receipts back to 2018, and asked many questions about Taste of Orland, and really focused on Brew Fest, because they wanted to go after that. They issued, as I said, at least one ticket that I'm aware of, and told another one that they would be fined. We are still waiting to hear from them. This is galling five people to attack our businesses. In the meantime, how much rioting and looting have been going on? Could we use some resources to actually protect the people? No, we'd rather go after businesses. Businesses that conducted a safe event where people had fun. That's what we're doing. That should scare everyone here. It scares me. I'm tired of the state of Illinois ruling by intimidation and fear. It's unacceptable. Enough. It's time for the legislature to get back to work and hold the governor accountable. That's the way our system works. What I find interesting about this is that we have a lawsuit, we all know about it. One person's voted consistently against it. That's fine. The concern, and proven to be true, the big concern for that vote was the fear of reprisals, the fear of retaliation, because it's been seen before. My opinion then is the same as it is now. What I said then was, if our residents, businesses, and elected officials are afraid of our state government, and I believe they are, many of them are, then we owe it to them to fight for them. There's an interesting quote from Ayn Rand that applies here. "Economic power is exercised by means of offering people a reward, an incentive, a payment, a value. Political power is exercised by means of a negative, by the threat of punishment, injury, imprisonment, destruction. The businessperson's tool is values. The bureaucrat's tool is fear." The majority of our board have agreed on numerous occasions to use values as our approach. We've given people facts and information. We followed the Constitution, and we've given people a freedom of choice. We did what we could to support businesses and people. Specifically, we opened our parks before the state. We opened our gyms before the state. We have opened preschool for in-person learning, while our local public schools still have not. We allow children and adults to play sports and to play on our fields. We voted to adopt our plan and follow the metrics and actual data, which allowed us to be fully open on July 20th. We hosted Taste of Orland, eight markets in the park, two concerts in the park, two concert nights at Centennial Park West, and drive-in movies. We have done all of this, and the data shows no case spikes. The data and science are clear. It's time to open. All the steps we took were to protect our hospital system. What we know is that our hospital system is empty. By its normal standards, it doesn't have enough people in it to operate, and that COVID is not straining it in any way. And COVID cases have been flat for over three months. In fact, they're now declining in suburban Cook County hospitals. In short, we, this board, this village, has informed people and trusted them. The Village of Orland Park will not be intimidated by moving goalposts or by the governor sending his government henchmen in to scare us. As I have said many times, it's easy to cave in and cancel everything. It's hard to solve the problem and determine how to do things safely. This particular instance is just another obstacle, and we have found another way from the laws that were passed by the legislature. Unfortunately, we couldn't exercise it in two days, like we said, so instead, we postponed the Brew Fest. But however, since it sold out quickly in the past, and it sold out quickly this time with almost no marketing, we can certainly host it for two straight nights to allow more people to enjoy it. So that's what we're going to do. Again, we decided to solve the problem. Staff did a great job solving it, making sure it's safe, and bringing another fun event to more Orland Park residents. Call the roll.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrell.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Mayor Pecor.
Aye. Motion carries six to one.
Agenda initiative COVID-related public information signs used village-wide?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Dodge.
Put a motion on the floor, then maybe we can discuss this for a moment. Move to approve authorizing village manager to proceed implementing trustee initiative sign campaign COVID-related public information sign.
Second.
Any comments?
Just, I don't know if staff can...
Trustee Dodge.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mayor Pecor.
Trustee Dodge.
The, do you have a rendering that you could show? I think it's in the board packets. So I think staff had worked up a simple sign. I gave some suggestions to staff where, quite frankly, it's an informational sign that I'd like to see posted in a lot of places in Orland Park, especially the main entrances. And the idea was, show the logo, the gem, say, "Welcome to Orland Park, for your safety and for everyone's safety," and then just do some basic CDC guideline types of images. So it, just a thought, I think it's relatively low cost, and again, it's a way to say, "Welcome. Everybody has a responsibility to be safe." That's the idea.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney.
Just a question. I mean, where are we planning on placing these signs?
So we're going to follow the same format that we did for the census signs. So, and Ahmad, those were at the entrances of the village hall, all the village facilities, the parks.
You scale this down, please?
Thank you. So we already have purpose-built signs at all of our village facilities, correct?
Yes. Each village facility on the entrance has some type of signage.
And then we're only going to put them at parks? We're not going to put them in any thoroughfares or any intersections, anything like that?
But we'll put them on, just like we did at village hall with the census signs, we'll put them on the outside of village hall.
Okay. I just know sometimes, you know, like, we already frown upon, you know, many signs being in public areas, you know, like political signs for sales, garage sales. I just didn't want to kind of set a, you know, double standard here, where the village is out putting signs everywhere, and then we're asking people to take theirs down or we're removing them.
Mayor Pecor.
Trustee Dodge. So one of the ideas that we discussed was, for example, at the various major arterial entrances to Orland Park, having these signs out there. So this is not, never meant to be in front of our buildings. To Trustee Maloney's comments, we've already had those signs. This was meant to be a basic road sign, where I've seen it used in other states. I thought it was a very effective way to welcome someone to your town and remind them we all have an individual responsibility till we get through this thing. So the vision was, on the streets, in various parts of the village, not necessarily in front of just our properties.
So that, again, I guess goes back to my point. We're going to set a double standard, where we can go put signs wherever we want, but then tell people to take them down? I had no problem with voting for this until that just came up, because if this is supposed to be a "Welcome to Orland Park, be wary of COVID," I don't agree with this. But if this is, we're going to put it in front of a building, if we're going to put it by our parks, I could care less. It's $1,000. But we do not need to generate fear and concern by seeing a sign when you're coming in like this, in plain sight like this. We're six months into this pandemic, and I think we're well aware of what we need to do. I mean, I think I mentioned this before. It's like sending your kid out into a snowstorm, and when he comes in, tell him to put his boots on. It doesn't make any sense.
Mayor Pecor.
Who's that?
Trustee Dodge.
Trustee Dodge. I guess, quoting none other than President Trump, "This is like a war." And if memory serves, I wasn't there, but I'm certainly a fan of history, I'm pretty sure we had Buy War Bonds and recruitment posters for the entirety of World War II. So with all due respect, there's a pretty simple idea in front of us. Let's signal to everybody who comes to Orland Park that we are, if you will, open, and we have an expectation that you will take the individual responsibility to help a community get through a pandemic. It's a pretty simple question.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton.
I would hope that any sign that's placed would not be placed in the right-of-way, in a parkway, because that's against our code. I mean, I know there were census signs that were placed illegally throughout the village, and village signs often end up in parkways where they don't belong. So I would agree with Trustee Maloney that these signs need to be put where they're legally allowed. For example, at the nature center, both entrances, there would be a nice thing to put there. Or put it by the building once people get in there, because there's nothing there right now. Even though it's outside, you don't need, you know, if there's nobody else around you, but I know, like, if there's some groups there or something, you know, wearing a mask would be, you know... And this is just a reminder, because obviously, people need reminders that, you know, you're supposed to wear a mask when you're inside, you're supposed to do this, you're not supposed to sneeze in people's faces, wash your hands, use hand sanitizer. But there again, wherever these signs go, they have to follow our village codes, and the codes say, "No parkways, no right-aways." You know, we have to follow our own rules.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Katsinas.
Yeah, I agree with Trustee Fenton. Being, you know, in a business where I use signage, you know, very mindful of where to place it, and I think we're setting a bad precedent, where we tell people, like Michael said, "Don't put it here, but we're going to put a village sign there." I think there comes a point of, you know, sign pollution too many. Perhaps if we made some signs available to local businesses that they can place in their own property, as opposed to putting them on right-aways. Now, I think they, I'm in favor of this, but I think they should all be legally placed.
Got it.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
So according to what this says, is that we're going to put it in our facilities and our entrances, and as long as that is the way that it is, so we're keeping within our rules. I mean, it's a very small amount of money, so I have no problems with this. Call the roll.
Trustee Dodge.
Aye.
Trustee Fenton.
Aye.
Trustee Calandrell.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Maloney.
Aye.
Mayor Pecor.
Aye.
Trick-or-treat guidelines?
So the trick-or-treat guidelines, I'm going to turn it over to George, but I think that staff came up with a pretty good idea on how to give guidelines to our residents. We've been getting a lot of questions on this, even though it's six weeks in advance, but with COVID, people don't have, they're really looking forward to anything that's a sense of normal, even if it's six weeks out. I think I even got some questions from some reporters on it already. So I think this is a good plan. Can you share it and see if we have consensus with the board for you to move forward? I don't think we have to move on any kind of ordinance, we just have to...
So just, I want to also thank, so a week ago, prior to a week ago, you know, as a staff, we've been, we were talking about pending items, and that was exactly the feedback we were getting. People are already asking about, you know, "Are we canceling Halloween?" So at the same time, the village of New Lenox, our colleagues in New Lenox approved something like this similar. So it was a great idea, and we leveraged it, used it for our own community. So long and short of it is, we, you know, the hours that are established in the code will remain since this year, October 31st is a Saturday. Trick-or-treating hours will remain two to eight. And for those homeowners who are concerned, what we're going to do is, we're going to make this sign available on our website. We will print out copies and have that available for anybody that wants to pick it up. They can put them at their house, and that just signals to trick-or-treaters that pass this house up. You know, since we're starting trick-or-treating at 2:00, the whole porch light on/off thing won't necessarily be applicable, so this is one of the signs for those folks that aren't comfortable. We'll also, and we're also doing something new this year, and the Recreation and Parks Department came up with a really unique non-contact activity that'll be available to residents, and it's a decorating contest. So for those folks that are uncomfortable going around trick-or-treating, they can still be involved in Halloween in some fashion. So if we get the consensus, we will start marketing this, and just reiterate that trick-or-treating is still happening. There are options.
Are there any questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney.
Thank you for actually thinking this through and putting a plan together and, you know, allowing the trick-or-treating for the kids instead of putting a ban on it. I think, you know, it's a little, you know, it's giving a choice to each household to participate. I mean, they get that every year, and, you know, providing guidance on how to do it safely here looks like what we're trying to do, which is great. But it's interesting, though, that we have to create signs to tell participants that homes are not willing to participate and put a mask on a picture once again. But, I mean, doesn't turning the porch light on work just as well? I know you said it's 2:00, but trick-or-treating always starts in the daytime, and people manage to follow that guidance. So I don't know why we need a sign with a mask on a pumpkin, but I guess it does convey a message, definitely. It just seems it's sensational, is it just a little bit? However, it's abundantly clear that children need to get out of the house for a little while, and it'll be great for them, enjoy themselves, get dressed up, and have a good time. So, you know, thank you for allowing it to happen.
Any other comments? Mr. Mayor? Trustee Calandrell.
Just wanted, this might be actually a good thing to put in our senior guy, because if we're going to do social media, he might just maybe last page cut out, or it doesn't have to be colorful, but we just talked about the weakness. I don't think it...
We'll make it the last page.
Good idea.
The back end of it.
Something to think about. I have it on occasion.
Any other comments? Great work. All in favor of doing this? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There you go. There's your consensus. Thank you. Non-scheduled visitors, I have two. One of them, I don't know the subject, Ron Trezak. Guess the meeting ran a little long for his tastes. Roland, I can't read this per rec.
Can you please go to the podium?
Thank you.
Had a quick question, what was going on with the Sky Zone thing? We live over there on Devonshire, and with the cops and all that going on last week, just wonder what progress was made.
I guess, could you be more specific?
Well, did they pull the license on the business?
Okay. Any other questions?
No, that was it, just because of the ruptures that was going on. And now the cleanup in that parking lot over there, going through the mall, see if we could get something taken care of with that.
Okay.
That's all I got.
All right. Joe, you want to pop up and speak a little bit, and then we'll give you a little background on the Sky Zone? You can go ahead and take your seat.
Evening, Mayor, and the members of the board. Want to provide a little statistical analysis about the state of the village regarding crime the last eight months. So the first thing we look at, hits the road, is index crimes. What is an index crime? Index crime is crimes pertaining to, against persons as well as property. There are 10 crimes. So six of them, in the crimes against person, the violent crimes are homicide, criminal sexual assault or rape, aggravated battery or aggravated assault or robbery, as well as human trafficking. In the arena of property crime, it's burglary, theft, motor vehicle theft, and, forgot one there, arson. So here's our stats currently, from January through August, from 2019 versus 2020. As you can see, we've seen a substantial decrease in the number of crimes occurring in Orland Park. Thirty-four percent decrease year-to-date. Sixteen percent decrease just in the month of August versus 19 versus 20. Go ahead and go to the next slide, please. So what's driving this thing? Property crime is the leading crime in Orland Park. Retail thefts, that's what drives our crime in Orland Park. As you can see, for the theft cases, we're over 200 down, and majority of them are coming from the Orland Square Mall. Our burglaries are down approximately 64% from last year. That's substantial. That's because our officers are doing a lot of business checks, a lot of house checks, part checks, and stuff like that. So that is unheard of, to be quite frank, in the 26 years I've been here, to have that much of a decrease. Our motor vehicle thefts, unfortunately, are up. Ladies and gentlemen, people are still not locking their vehicles and leaving their fobs in their cars. It's frustrating for us. We've done numerous campaigns to address those concerns, and we're still seeing an increase in that. And in arsons, we have none this year. Go ahead to the next slide, please. So let's drill down into violent crimes. We've had one criminal homicide this year, unfortunately, back in January of 2020. We had a vehicle that was involved in a crash at 151st and Harlem, where a young child was perished. And that individual was just recently charged with reckless homicide. No rapes in 2020, four robberies. What's driving the increase is the aggravated battery and aggravated assaults. Go ahead and pull the next slide, please. So let's drill down, let's get in the weeds on it. What's causing this? A lot of it has to do with the quarantine. Our domestic-related issues, people are just not getting along. It's causing a lot of violence within the home. I read a story about 57% increase in number of divorces occurring in 2020. The other thing is attack on our officers. People are angry, they're disrespectful. Just, and this year alone, I've seen a substantial increase of 26% from May till now in the amount of resisting arrests that are occurring. People are just not respecting the law. Okay. Go ahead and hit the next slide, please. So as you look at the 25-year review of index crimes, in 2019, we had the lowest amount in 25 years. Hopefully this year will eclipse that. We realize COVID has a large component to that, but nevertheless, the burglaries are down, violent crime is about average, but, you know, but our thefts are down. So that's where we're at regarding that. Any questions?
Nope. Could you throw out mine real quick? I'm going to throw a couple more slides, and I know we haven't addressed your Sky Zone question, but I will, I will address it. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. So, Chief just showed you these numbers of how crime has gone down. We were also the lowest in crimes against person in 2018, which is the most recent statistic in the state of Illinois, so that's, you know, phenomenal. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So you can see our violent crimes per thousand population. You see where Orland Park is, the lowest, and you can see going across. You know, the nice thing is, is Tinley Park's also dropped, Mokena's low, so we have a very safe region here. And, you know, so I threw Mokena in, even though they're not over 50,000, just so you can see where we rank with them. Even though they're a much smaller town, they don't have quite as much activity as us, we're still, you know, on a violent crime basis, we're doing very, very well. Now, the question comes about the mall, and that was written on your thing here, crime at the mall. Sky Zone's not the mall, the mall doesn't own that, and, but I wanted to give this comparison, because people have a view, a perception of the mall, and we can't change perceptions except by giving you facts. And if you don't believe the facts, we can't, none of us here can convince you otherwise if you don't believe the facts, but I can give you the facts. Okay? And the facts are, we track this, and we track it across malls across the area. And you can see our crime cast statistics, so 100 is considered average, the national average. Ours is 51, Oakbrook's 56, and Woodfield's 83, within 1 to 3 miles of Orland Square. So we have a very safe mall, and that's very good for us, because we have a lot of other retail within that 1 to 3 miles, too. So we do a very good job with crime. We're way better than average, half of the national average, and lower than all the other malls in the region, including malls that everybody here always compares us to and say, "Oh, they're so safe." Well, the statistics show that, so are we. If you look 2 to 6 miles, you'll see we're the only ones actually below the national average. So doing a great job, that also means our neighbors are doing a great job for some of them. Okay? So, and it also helps, I guess, in our case, that, you know, the mall's in the middle of town, so we're responsible for a lot of that area, whereas in some towns, it's right on the edge, so it may be another town that's responsible for some of that, some of that bleed over. But nonetheless, still better than the national average, so we do a great job. Now, that does not mean that when people say, "Well, you're just ignoring the problem." No, we're not ignoring the problem. We understand that there are threats, and I think the Chief will support me on this. We understand the threats. We're seeing more threats, we're seeing more people trying to come in, we're seeing more, you know, resisting arrest, more aggressive behavior, those types of things than we've seen in recent years. A lot of that's because 10,000 criminals were released from Cook County Jail. 10,000. They certainly didn't have jobs to go to, because we know what's happened with the economy, right? So even if they were inclined to go to jobs, they can't get those jobs. People, a lot of people have lost their jobs. So what happens in those environments, crime goes up. We're still managing to see crime go down, which is great. That doesn't mean our officers aren't working their tail off to keep you safe, aren't working their tail off to get you information, and working harder probably than you ever have to get that done, aren't you, Chief?
We are. Call service of highest level.
So we're working really hard to make that happen. But those are the facts. We are making that happen. We're making that happen through the proactive things that we do, through the agreements we have with neighbors on the crime, the vehicle theft task force that we put in place that all of us approved. I mean, just, we're doing a lot of this stuff regarding Sky Zone itself. We can't, at the board, really comment too much on it, because we may have to adjudicate it. So they have been, they have been ticketed, and our attorney can give you the specifics on that, and then the process is, the village manager will hear that case, the village manager rules, and then they have the right to appeal that to us as a board, so we can't really comment on the case. Regarding the trash, I can tell you for sure that every day, our code enforcement officer is going there every morning, and he's been, and he's writing tickets, and those also get adjudicated. But like anybody, like, like any criminal that we arrest and we handcuff and we charge, they have their day in court. They're presumed innocent, they're presumed innocent. And so businesses are treated the same way, so there is a process that has to be followed, and things cannot be done immediately. So Dennis, you want to fill in some of that?
Yeah, so at this point, under the village code, notice of a hearing on the revocation of the business license for Sky Zone is set for next Wednesday, September 30th. The process, as the mayor mentioned, is first before the village manager. Staff will present its case, Sky Zone will have an opportunity to present it, whatever case it wants to present. The village manager will listen to that, consider it, make a decision, and if a decision is adverse to Sky Zone, they have the right to appeal to the entire village board. So the merits of the Sky Zone situation isn't something that the board can comment on this time. I can assure you that there, as of right now, there's a hearing scheduled for revocation of the business license.
Okay. Anybody else to speak?
He's really, he was here to discuss the theft at the mall. He did it in the Sky Zone incident. We actually have 100% of the Orland Park, we consider, they are in full force, we see them everywhere. So we weren't here to question, to ask, and we're here to, we're here on our time. Specifically, it was what happened. I mean, obviously socially, we all took it out there, we don't know what's true, it's not, I just know that.
Can you go to the microphone and speak, because we have to record all of this? I think Clerk Mahalik would appreciate that, and give your name also.
No, so we do live right near the mall, and.
And could you give your name, too, for the record?
Tracy Perrikey. And so our concern was, we're not asking you for the comments or the details or the legalities, we were just here as citizens, we've never come before, we don't care to, we're not political people. Orland Park, you do great as a police department. It was just to go outside my house and hear what sounded like 1,000 sirens going off, and then to find out, you know, you don't know what's believable on social media or not, that there was an incident at the Sky Zone, and so we do have concerns about that. We don't care about the crime at the mall. We full well know that you guys do a good job with that, and they are going down, and the mall is what the mall is. It's just really our concern. Every day, I drive through the mall to go to certain places, it does, there's trash everywhere, and I'm glad that you guys are on top of that, but I mean, it's just, it's filthy. I mean, again, social media is what it is, we all know what you can see out there. I don't know if there was 800 people there, I don't know, because social media blows stuff up, but regardless, I heard the sirens, you're seeing things on Facebook, people posting, you know, "Hey, hey, it's all turned up," whatever. I mean, it's scary to us. It's scary because I'm not worried about the mall, I'm just worried about the protection of Orland. You're, we're talking about bragging up how Orland is, how great it is, how we're trying to do good things and beautify it, and I'm not seeing any beauty coming out of that, especially last weekend. So that's what our concern was. We weren't here to knock Orland Police. I think you're doing phenomenal, phenomenal.
Thank you. We appreciate it, and our comments were just because we know that all the comments that are out there, and so it's, you know, public record so that everyone can see it. I'll address the Sky Zone incident. Tap me on the shoulder if I'm stepping across the line. And Chief, correct me if I'm stating anything incorrectly, but we essentially received a call about a fight at the Sky Zone, and it involved three youths. And our officers, when they arrived there, realized that there were, they were north of 800 people there, which is in violation, which is above their fire code limit. And so our officers recognized that this is a danger. These children were between, keep in mind, these are children, between the ages of 10 and 17, children. And so our officers made the correct call to evacuate the place, because it was, it's obviously, there's a lot of issues with having too many people there for fire code if there's a fire or anything else. But you also have the issue of 10 to 17-year-olds needing rides home. And so our officers know that now you have over 800 people, children, in a parking lot, and that's a big deal. One, a lot of them are older, you know, they're 16, 17, 16 and 17-year-olds don't usually respond well to being told they can't do something, right? We all know that, we've all dealt with that with our own children. So we know we have that, we only have a handful of officers. So our officers, what they did is they called for support from neighboring towns to make sure that that crowd was controlled, and so that all of those children got home safely. So what we were doing is keeping, it was predominantly keeping the children there safe, and obviously, if you're doing that, you're keeping everyone else safe as well. And you're right, social media blows up a lot of things, but that's what happened. And Chief, could you, did I miss anything there?
Anybody else to speak?
Board comments. Trustee Fenton.
I'd just like to say, welcome to fall tomorrow at 8:31 a.m., and if you really want to see some beautiful colors and changes to the environment, take a trip over to the nature center. All of our native plants will be in there, getting ready for their time to go to sleep for the winter, and it's really pretty out there right now, unfortunately, unless you're like myself, I'm allergic to bees, so I stay away from there. But it's really great what's going on there, and with the bird population, too, so it's a really nice place to take your family, go take a look, and see what we've developed out there. So also, just to remind everybody about the tours out at the Stella Wagon Farm, if you want to see another great opportunity that's in the village, and the Bowley Farm. The farm stand is still open until October 31st, so get out there, get your pumpkins, get your gourds, and get the end of the year's vegetable crop. So a lot of nice things out in nature to do, especially with this great weather.
Trustee Dodge.
Just a couple of comments. So, you know, it's pretty clear Orland Park has a lot of strengths, and as alluded to earlier, long-running investment in the police department, and a great police department that we have matters, and I think our residents really care. I think one of the strengths of Orland Park is how we engage with our residents, which is always a work in progress when controversial issues come up and things are perhaps communicated well or not communicated well. So I think we can all commit to that. But, you know, it's, I've said something like this before, that we are a deliberative body, and when you deliberate, sometimes you take different points of view about the same fact set, and you come to different conclusions, you articulate what you believe, and you get on with it. And I will say it again, there's a number of things that are said on this board that I agree with, there's a number of things that are said on this board that I don't agree with, and I'll continue to point that out when there's substantive issues. And I think tonight was a perfect example. There's a lot of things going on right now with the state of Illinois, and I think that pointing out where the state of Illinois might be doing its job well or not doing its job well seems to be fine, but I, for one, don't agree with everything that was said, because it feels like it is inherently angular and overtly political. And so I just want to make it clear to the people of Orland Park that when people on this board speak, they are speaking for themselves as an individual elected member, they're not necessarily representing the perspective of all the board members. Thank you.
Trustee Calendrella.
I have no doubt, Stevie Ball.
Trustee Healy.
I wanted to thank Joe Mitchell for that great presentation. I felt more informed because of that. And last week, I went to my favorite 7-Eleven at 143rd and 82nd Avenue, and there happened to be a carjacking at the same time, four doors down. And I know the perpetrator is going to be, I trust our police department to catch this guy shortly, so I think that'll be fine. But I asked Joe Mitchell, I said, "Hey, what can I do? What should a person do with that runaway, or fight back, or whatever?" And the answer is, "Don't fight back, just try and be a, you know, don't make the situation worse than it is, but use your, exercise your personal judgment, and call for help, assist a victim where possible, and as Joe said, be a good witness." And that means, you know, pay attention and all that with the crime floating out from Chicago and all that. I think we're going to see an increase, it's inevitable that we see an increase in crime eventually, and it's, even though the statistics don't bear that out now, I think it's coming. But I would, I think Joe's advice of be a good witness is something that we could all adhere to. So that's my comment.
Trustee Katsinas.
Wanted to thank the village manager, George, for working proactively to get new businesses here, is what you did with Pete's, you started the ball rolling. Little bit of email from me, and a lot from the mayor, and I thank you for that. You know, we need more of that to fill spaces, especially in light of the store closings. So in addition to everything you do, thank you for doing that. It's a huge thing, and will bring happiness to many grocery shoppers like me, so thank you.
Trustee Maloney.
Well, several great things happened tonight. We've got the Brew Fest rescheduled, well, going to be rescheduled and have a second night. We're allowing the kids to go out and trick-or-treat, and we're going to welcome Pete's Fresh Market, which is going to be fantastic. We don't have to drive to Bowling Brook and Lamont anymore to go there. You know, definitely check out the meat department when you can, it's awesome. And we got some great events coming up. We had the, we had the Sentinel Park West concert, which staff, once again, you guys amaze us with being able to think on the fly and come up with something that works. Everybody had a great time, it was enjoyable, a lot of people just out having a great night, and it was, it was really great that you guys put it together the way you did. We got a drive-in movie coming up on the 25th, and the Great Pumpkin Party on the 26th, and, you know, it's, we hear about, I think now it's been three meetings in a row on how, you know, that we shouldn't be talking about politics up here, and I don't think the majority of us are, but we need to keep reminding, being reminded that it's not a political conversation, which also seems to sound political at times. But to kind of correct Trustee Dodge, we may represent ourselves up here, but we also represent the village when we speak independently. So I think, you know, thinking of it that way, we are a board, we do work together up here, we may not all agree, but we serve the same mission, and that's to serve the people of Orland Park, so we need to keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. So some good stuff's happened around here in the last couple of weeks. Preschool's open in person, so great job, staff, appreciate it, all's going well. So great job by staff on that, so really appreciate it. I want to thank you for all your hard work making this happen. The concert in Sentinel Park was throwing yet another curveball with the heavy rain we had for several days before. We have great weather now, but we had some really heavy rains that really trashed the[1763.23] park, we'd have put a bunch of people in there, it was really sloppy, messy. Great audible to move it, move the stage out into the parking lot, and it worked great. The skies cleared just in time, and we had a phenomenal event, so I really want to thank staff for all of that, Ray, for your team, you know, Chief Mitchell for, for all of our public safety folks, all of our public works folks, and I know that was the same night, I mean, literally right as that was going on, I think our headliner was on is when the Sky Zone stuff was happening, so there was a lot of stress, because we obviously have extra police at, at an event with that many people, so, so great work by everyone on that, and I think everyone there had a phenomenal time, so it was, it was fantastic. Great job again by staff coming up with a plan for Brew Fest. Here in Orland, we do things, we get things done, we figure out how, ways to do things for our residents, and great job on that. And lastly, enjoy the wonderful weather this week. This is the week that we all put up with five months of horrible weather in the winter for this next week, so enjoy it. If you can, get out, get out, get out of work a little early, get out and enjoy it, because the weather's going to be phenomenal for the next week. With that, I'll entertain a motion going to executive session.
So moved.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
Moved to go on executive session for A, approval of minutes, B, pending litigation against affecting or on behalf of the village when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Trustee Calandrell, seconded, call the roll.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calandrell?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.[1779.53]